Let's bring this meeting to order, please. I'd like to call up Lieutenant Colonel Merkel and Cadet Lieutenant Elise Cawthorn to lead the color guard, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please rise as we present the national colors.
Forward, march! March time, march! Colors, turn! Colors, halt! Reset the colors! Ladies and gentlemen, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we go, colors! Colors, turn! Forward, march!
Please take your seats. Good evening. My name is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Elise Cawthorn, and I am here tonight to speak about the West Broward High School JRTC Annual Service Learning Project and also explain how the town of Southwest Ranches has played a vital role in completing our project. First and foremost, on behalf of the program and my service learning team, I'd like to share my ultimate gratitude for the town of Southwest Ranches. Truly, without your participation in our project, we would not have been able to achieve even half the level of success that we did through your active involvement and commitment. I'd also like to thank you for the pride that your town has taken in the accomplishments of our project, as is reflected by your request for me to speak here tonight. So, thank you. It would be a quite difficult task to explain the project to you all without first giving a brief explanation about what the program JRTC is. So, for a brief explanation, JRTC is a program at West Broward High School, and while it is a military-funded program, it is not a military recruitment program. It does take after the military in that it follows an army rank structure and that it aims to instill within us the same leadership values that the actual army utilizes. The overall purpose of our program is to enhance our leadership ability, develop our public speaking skills, and motivate us to become better citizens. This is where the service learning project comes into play. Each year, our school -- I'm sorry, our program is required to conduct a service learning project. Service learning differs from community service in that although it does include community service, it occurs in an environment where cadets can learn and develop their leadership ability while participating in an organized service experience within their own community. So, while we do perform community service, it's in a far more structured and organized environment, and it must incorporate some form of cadet learning and development. When we began the project, we had two goals already set in place. The first, as I stated, was cadet development, and the second was engaging within our community, which is where the town of Southwest Ranches came into play, but I will expand on that later. As a collective unit, my service learning team and I decided to pursue the military supply drive. When conducting a service learning project, there are many aspects to the project and many standards set in place to ensure that it's completed in the most effective manner possible. One of those standards is that a service learning project must require minimal to no fundraising whatsoever. As you know, it can be very costly to ship supplies overseas, so this is when engaging with our community became an essential component of the project. We had to engage within our community and do research to find a local organization that would be willing to ship the supplies for us. We were fortunate enough to come across the town of Southwest Ranches, and after coming in contact, the town of Southwest Ranches agreed to help us and ship the supplies overseas for us. So, we began the drive at my school from March 16th to March 30th. The drive did not only occur within the JRTC program, but it also incorporated all the elective teachers within our school, so it was a school-wide drive. In total, we were able to collect approximately 1,239 items for our troops. Overall, we consider our project to be very successful in that it did meet our three goals. We were able to help develop our cadets through the project. We were able to engage with our community thanks to Southwest Ranches, and we were able to support our troops to the best of our ability. This concludes the project aspect of my presentation, but the recognition of our project's accomplishments and Southwest Ranches' contribution to our accomplishments does not end there. In our program, we also have another team that is known as Leadership Team, which is tested on JRTC curriculum. That team has been fortunate enough to qualify for the second consecutive year for the national competition occurring in Washington, DC. A major aspect of this competition is conducting a presentation on this year's service learning project. So, by being able to present this during our competition, we will be able to once again acknowledge Southwest Ranches' contribution to our project on a national level. Besides that, although our project presentation will then serve as a model for the cadet command across the nation on how a service learning project is properly conducted. Once again, we'd like to share how thankful we are for the town of Southwest Ranches to help us in completing this project, and the Bob Capitaine will always consider the town of Southwest Ranches to be a friend. Thank you for having me. Good night.
Sure. Could we trouble you to come up so we can get a photo shot with you all? Would that be okay? Uh, we can do that. Let's do the -- we'll do the proclamations.
So...
Yeah, just have the seat up front here if you would, and then we'll do the proclamations, and we'll do them after that. So, if... You want to read those for me?
Mayor, we have two proclamations. The first one is a proclamation for the West Broward High School Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. So, whereas the West Broward High School Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, or JROTC, was founded to help cadets gain leadership and citizenship skills, mental management abilities, responsibility, integrity, and cooperation; and whereas, under the direction of First Sergeant Ernest Sosa, First Sergeant David Torres, and Lieutenant Colonel Kenneth Merkel, cadets are instructed on many life skills such as etiquette, drug awareness, physical fitness, and citizenship; and whereas, the West Broward JROTC decided to organize a school-wide donation drive to help active military service members as part of their annual service learning project; and whereas, through the determined efforts of these outstanding cadets, the donation drive began in mid-March, and by the end of that month, eight boxes of food and supplies were collected, representing more than 1,200 donated items; and whereas, on April 7, 2017, West Broward JROTC dropped off the donated items to the town, which serves as a collection point for the Military Hero Support Foundation; and whereas, the Military Hero Support Foundation quickly sent the donated items to active military members in Afghanistan and Iraq; and whereas, the selfless act of organizing a school-wide donation drive for active military service members illustrates the ideals of leadership and citizenship that JROTC seeks to instill, and as such, the cadets of West Broward High School JROTC are to be recognized for their efforts. Now, therefore, the mayor and town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, to hereby proclaim May 25, 2017, as West Broward High School Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Day, dated this 25th day of May 2017, from your mayor Doug McKay. Mayor, we have another proclamation as well for the Military Hero Support Foundation. Whereas Military Hero Support Foundation was founded in 2008 by Carla Smiley, and its mission is to provide military veterans direction and support in achieving an effective transition during their return home; and whereas, under the direction of Jeanette Chandler, Director of Veterans Affairs, Military Hero Support Foundation endeavors to act as an advocate and liaison between service members, their families, and available resources within the military and local municipalities; and whereas, the town has coordinated many support drives for Military Hero Support Foundation over the years and remains a collection point to this day; and whereas, the organization, a longtime partner of the town in coordinating assistance to our military service members and their families, recently lost their headquarters when their landlord sold the building they were operating from; and whereas, Morning Day Community Solutions, a nonprofit organization based in Pompano Beach, Florida, was instrumental in a recent support drive by providing Military Hero Support Foundation office space within their building; and whereas, the ability to operate effectively and provide assistance to veterans in our communities would have been compromised without a base of operations; and whereas, while supporting -- I'm sorry, while operating out of their new base of operations, Military Hero Support Foundation was able to successfully ship care packages overseas to military service members and provide assistance to veterans stateside. Now, therefore, the mayor and town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, to hereby proclaim May 25, 2017, also as Military Hero Support Foundation Day, dated this 25th day of May 2017, from Doug McKay, your mayor.
Let me set these up here. You guys ready to go up there? We'll get some pictures.
Um, tomorrow?
Watch you guys come up. I would rather you guys line up first, and then...
We'll line up the folks in uniform.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Photography, Corey Hocken.
Yeah, no doubt. Just have them there on one side and the other. And right on the other. And then why don't you go between these two council members, and you one on the other side? And then two of you guys on one side, one on the other. There you go. Look at that. Does that work for you, Bob? All right, good. I think you guys catch on. Hey, Smiles, come on! Is this gonna happen again tomorrow? All right. Thank you, folks. Hold on. Come on up.
If him is here with him, well, proper.
You want pictures too? Come on up.
For the kids, not for me.
Oh, you should have been in the picture already.
There you go. If you could be up here in front somewhere that they can see it. I'll slide over a little. Right here. There you go. Same general idea. Get your shot. All right. Can you turn a little bit? It's got a little light center. There you go, perfect. More, hold on, hold on. You got more families? Come on in. Come on down. Any families here who want to be in? Come on in there. There you go.
I need you guys to come in, and the taller of the -- could you on the left stand behind the boy and the lady you're with? There you go, that way. Thank you. You're destined to be a general someday. Good. This way. Everybody see the camera lens?
We can.
All right. There's a big group.
Good. Any more? Anybody else? We good?
Anybody else?
What are you doing next, Keith?
All right. We ready? The next, I'm gonna have Sandy come up.
Is that the girl you're just standing with?
Mayor?
Yes.
If you don't mind, let's just do roll call now. We can officially start the meeting.
Okay, go right ahead.
Councilmember Schroeder, here. Councilmember Fisickelli. Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Vice Mayor Breckus.
Here.
Mayor McKay.
Here.
Carla Smiley, can I -- would you come up for just a minute so we can go ahead and give you the mic for a minute? Sure. I saw it.
I'm sorry, my back is to you guys. Hi, everyone. Thank you again. This is such an honor. Southwest Ranches, you have been with me for so long, and you have taken care of so many heroes. There's supposed to be a slideshow of some of our guys. There they are. If you turn around, those are our guys that just got all those care packages from you guys. And Freddie was very generous also. Freddie, down here, if you could show him those. These pictures down here is all the guys you took care of and the Southwest Ranches. I took pictures of them for you, so you, all of you, have been supporting us. And we also take care of all those bond sniffing dogs. I have 29 over there, so they get care packages too. So, we have over 774 guys and girls right now that we take care of. Every week is a struggle to get supplies, because Jeanette is my co-founder. We are everywhere begging everyone for supplies and money to send our care packages. We are nonprofit, still, no one gets paid in our foundation, so I can't thank you enough. Not only are care packages go overseas, but when they come home, we also have another part, and that is what Jeanette does. She puts them in housing, we get them off the street. Right when they come home, we have a few that are homeless, right there. He just got sent overseas. Daniel has been living in his car until he went overseas. Jeanette's cousin, she'll tell you about that story. But again, we can't thank you enough. It's an everyday struggle, but we're gonna continue. God gave us this mission. They're heroes, and they need to be taken care of. And also, I'd like to present a plaque to Lieutenant Kenneth Merkel. If you could come up here? Sorry.
It's okay.
Lieutenant Colonel, I'm sorry. But you said all those supplies are because of you and your ROTC. You guys came together to help us. I can't thank you enough. So, Military Heroes would like to present you with this plaque, and thank you. It's an honor what you guys did for us, and thank you all for always supporting me and my foundation with Jeanette, our co-founder, and Sidely over there. Sidely, come over here. She's our number-one volunteer. She goes to all our churches and the schools and picks up all our supplies. So, we can't thank you enough. Oh.
Don't need the props.
Yes.
Awesome.
And if Jeanette can just tell you her side, I know we have to hurry, but what she does with the other side of the foundation. Jeanette, and she's my co-founder.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, we greatly appreciate everything you do for us, as it is so important to take care of our soldiers and our veterans who are over there for us. But when they come back, the biggest portion of our foundation is taking care of them when they return. We have soldiers that have committed suicide. We have, in the last year and a half, we have had six soldiers that we've taken care of in Afghanistan have committed suicide. It is so important that those that we do reach, that they don't have any family members that send them anything or have any communication with them, or when they return home, everything is gone. That portion is my baby, and without the community and without help from you all, we wouldn't be where we at today, and being able to, even if we make a difference to one soldier. So, on behalf of Military Hero Support Foundation, I greatly appreciate absolutely everything that you have done for us, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, hold on. Don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. We're gonna have to come up with you for another picture, so Jeanette and you all and Carla, hold on. Come on, everybody. Thank you all for all you do. I don't know if anybody else wanted to say anything to anybody. We're all good. All right. Proclamation done, proclamation done. Let's see, we're gonna do, we're -- no, we're gonna do... No, we're not. I already talked to Marty. We're gonna move Leslie Kastner up. So, if I could get a motion to jump Leslie?
Make a motion to move the recognition of Leslie Kastner up.
I second it.
Awesome. We need a call? We're good? Okay. All right. So, let's do the presentation and the recognition for retired Assistant Chief Leslie Kastner, please. We've got... Want to pass that to you, Andy, or...
Yeah, Mayor, we do have some keepsakes for Leslie Kastner.
Okay.
But I wanted to invite the council to make whatever comments you'd like, and invite Chief Bennett up here as well to make some comments, and I think you all have the opportunity to wish Assistant Chief Kastner well, and certainly upon the conclusion of your comments, we have some nice mementos to pass along to her.
Awesome, awesome, great. Okay. Lee, I'll let you lead.
Let me start off by saying there's not enough good that I can say about Leslie. I met Leslie several years ago while I was working for the Bard County Fire Rescue. When we had special events, I would call Leslie and the Southwest Ranches firefighters to attend. Leslie always was willing to come out and help and stay till the end of the event. Leslie started out as a volunteer firefighter when there were very few women in the department. Through the years, she moved and ranked to driver engineer and became a state-certified driver engineer, then lieutenant. Leslie was instrumental in me being hired with the Southwest Ranches Fire Department. When I became chief, Leslie became the assistant chief. She was involved with making policy procedures, decisions, along with administrative duties. Leslie was very dedicated to the department and ready to respond and help to any emergency calls, day or night. We both had something in common: our love for animals. The Southwest Ranches Fire Department has rescued or reunited with their owners many animals, large, small, throughout the town. For several years, Leslie headed the Large Animal Rescue Program for the Southwest Ranches Fire Department. She also planned and organized several awareness events and certification classes on large animal rescue for both fire and police departments at no charge. I'd like to say, Leslie, from the fire department and the town of Southwest Ranches, we'd like to thank you for your years of dedicated service. Enjoy your retirement, and if you could step on up here a minute? That's her retirement badge. But thank you for all your dedicated service, and, you know, like I said, your response for 24/7, you were on a job.
I don't sleep that much.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
You might as well stay up there, Leslie. Who wants to lead next? Dee, you wanna lead next? Steve?
What can I say? All the years I've known you, and I liked you right out from the gate, and every day I go to love you more and more and your family, even Jeff. What you've done for this town is just unbelievable, and you deserve so much. You've given so much, and never, ever have I ever heard anybody say that you've asked for anything in return, not even recognition. With that being said, Leslie, I hope you enjoy your retirement. I'm gonna continue to see you every week. And you too. And good luck, and I'll see you soon.
Hey, Leslie. Leslie, I go way back. First time I met Leslie, I unfortunately started a fire in my backyard. Here she come with her little fire truck by herself, dropping up in my pasture. But, Leslie, I sure have enjoyed working with you, and we appreciate all you've done for the town and what you've done. It is unreal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What to say? Leslie, you've done so much for our town, years of dedicated service, and even though you're retiring, the amazing thing is the ripple effect of the service you've given to this town is gonna continue for years and years to come. There'll be animals that'll be rescued years from now that is based on the training and the dedication that you've delivered throughout the years, and people that have learned that continue to use that skill and just continue on. There are firefighters that will continue to save lives for years to come because of what you've done and the training you've done and the service and the dedication. There's no way to thank you for all that. There's no way to recount the hours that were away from your family that you dedicated to the community, you dedicated to our town and to our families. So, we just thank you. We wish you the very best. Enjoy your retirement. You've certainly earned it, and we love you.
Thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
Dying.
Club nine. You deserve it. You deserve all this recognition. I remember back in the 90s, before we became a town, you sitting on the couch with a radio in Tammy and Johnny Dollar's house, clearing calls. Brings back a lot of memories. We are today because people like you made us what we are today. We have a vibrant community. We have Help Your Neighbor complex with everybody and everything, people running around with chainsaws yesterday, clearing roads, things of that nature, dragging trucks in my street, pulling limbs off, and it's all that can-do spirit that you've helped foster, and we can, you know, there are not enough ways to say thank you, but I'm gonna say thank you. And I'm also gonna thank somebody behind you, Jeff. Thank you for letting her play. We really, really do appreciate it. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, I wanna ditto everything everybody else has said and not be second-winded, but I wanna thank you for clearly all the years of service, all the friendship, all your time, your husband's time, because he contributes in the background, I know. I wanna thank you personally for helping me with my first campaign and assisted me in having the party at your house, so that was very grateful and appreciative. We love you guys. You're great friends. You'll never be forgotten, and thank you immensely, and apologize for the long time coming to get to this point, but we're here, we're getting it done, we're doing it, and God bless, and we love you. So, what are we doing next? We went up for pictures?
Marty, just spin around the podium.
Spin around, oh, okay, great. Oh, you know what I'll do? How's this, right here, good?
There you go.
I'm a lawyer and a policymaker, anything you want, go for it. But, well, hello everybody, it's good to see you all, and I really wanna just thank all of the wonderful folks behind me, you know, I have to tell you, I love the Town of Southwest Ranches. When I served in the Florida Legislature, I had the great privilege of representing Southwest Ranches up in Tallahassee, and I loved it. Then I got elected to the County Commission, and unfortunately, it wasn't in my district. But now that I've been elected Property Appraiser, I represent all 1.8 million people of Broward County, and Southwest Ranches is one of the 31 cities that I'm privileged to represent, and I have to tell you, this is really a gem here in Broward County. You know, I was looking behind folks, and I see that Southwest Ranches became a town in 2000, I can't believe it's been 17 years. And what I have to tell you is, it's pretty amazing to see where Southwest Ranches is, because there's not a lot of commercial properties here, there's a lot of agricultural classifications, so the tax base isn't very large, but the folks behind me do such a good job with the money that you give them, they provide such excellent services, and this town is really strong, and it's wonderful, and I think it's a great thing. And with that said, I have to tell you, I love being our Broward County Property Appraiser. Let me tell you a little about what we do at the Broward County Properties' Office, and that I was hoping to give the folks behind me, and the Town of Southwest Ranches, an idea of where they are right now with regard to their taxable value, and how Southwest Ranches is doing when it comes to its real estate economy. The first thing that we do is, we determine the value of every single piece of property in Broward County, whether it's residential, commercial, tangible personal property, or centrally-assessed property, which are railroads. And the reason that's important is because when the Town of Southwest Ranches, or the Broward County Commission, or the School Board, when they set your tax rate, the amount of taxes that you pay is a relationship between the tax rate and the value of the property. So the higher the value of the property, the more taxes folks pay, the lower the value of the property, the lower the amount of taxes folks pay. So the first thing that we wanna do is just get it right. You know, Broward County has more people than 13 states, the District of Columbia, and all US territories except Puerto Rico, it's a big place. And the 211 people that work with me in my office, they do a great job, but like anything else, mistakes can happen. And what I tell people is, if they think that we've made a mistake in the valuing of their property, please come on down to our office, or we'll come to you. And if we made a mistake, we'll adjust your value accordingly, if not, we'll let you know exactly how we arrived at any particular value. The second thing that we do is, we provide tax-saving exemptions to folks that qualify. If you live here in Broward County, and this is your primary residence, you're entitled to a homestead exemption. What that does is, it takes $50,000 of value off the tax roll that you don't have to pay taxes on, and it also ensures that you'll never be taxed out of your home, because your taxable value can never go up more than 3% every single year. Once you're entitled to that, there are many other exemptions under Florida law that you may be entitled to. For example, there's a low-income senior exemption. What that means is, if you're over 65 years of age, you make under $29,000 a year, and most instances, Social Security doesn't count, in that case, you're entitled to another $25,000 exemption. There are veterans exemptions, there's first responder exemptions, there's disability exemption, and it's been my goal as the Broward County Property Appraiser, to find every single Broward County resident entitled to a tax-saving exemption that's not getting it, and to give it to them, because they're entitled to it under the law. The third thing that we do is just as important. You know, my view is, when people pay their property taxes, they should just pay their fair share, nothing more and nothing less. If somebody's entitled to an exemption like we spoke about, and they're not getting it, they're paying too much in property taxes, that's not their fair share. Conversely, if somebody's getting something they're not entitled to get, if they're frauding the system, they're paying too little in property taxes, and that's not their fair share either, and what that does, it makes everybody else playing by the rules suffer. And so we also have a fraud division at the Broward County Property Appraisers' Office, and those hard-working women and men go through the county every single day, and they find folks that are not playing by the rules. And what they do is, if somebody is getting something they're not entitled to get, if they're frauding the system, they put the value that they're not paying back on the tax roll, and they backtax them for the amount of money that they owe the people of Broward County. To give you an idea, since 2004, they've put $7 billion of value back on the tax roll in Broward County, which amounts to millions of dollars of taxes every year, and they've also backtaxed people approximately $70 million, and have collected $60 million, which is money that's been returned to the people of our county. As a matter of fact, last week alone, we collected about $400,000, and that's an important thing, because that's your money, and you're entitled to have it go where it's supposed to go. Those are really our three main functions. What I just wanted to do briefly, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for having me here today, and I wanna thank the council as well, I wanted to give you all just a quick snapshot as to where Broward County and Southwest Ranches is right now. Because what you also have to remember too, is the value that we provide Southwest Ranches, basically the value of the land, the taxable value, is what they're gonna levy their millage rate on, which is gonna determine how much money they have to provide you services, to pay for fire, to pay for building roads, and fixing potholes, and things of that nature. And so the first slide that I have, I forgot to, and I apologize so much, I forgot to bring my slideshow that I had, but I'm gonna have to let you all know. The first page that I had, that I handed out to the commission, the council, is basically what the countywide real property values are. If you came to Broward County, and you decided to buy all the residential and commercial property in Broward County, on the open market, basically what a buyer would pay to a seller, for 2016, you would get about $234 billion. That's a lot of money, but we have more people than 13 states, and that's a lot of property. For 2017, this next year, it's risen about 7.85% to about $252 billion. So as you can see, people are buying, they're selling properties, and so the values are going up. The next page that I handed to the council is basically what the countywide real property values are for taxable values. Now, this is the value that the County Commission cares about, 'cause this is the value that they wanna utilize to be able to set their millage rate on, to determine how much money they're gonna have in their budget. For 2016, the taxable value countywide was about $155 billion. This year, there's about an 8.83% increase in value, which will make the taxable value countywide approximately $168 billion. What that translates to real money, if the County Commission, the Broward County Commission, does not change their millage rate, if they don't roll the millage rate back, or increase it, that will bring in to them another, around $82 million more this year than last year. That's a pretty hefty and substantial increase. To give you an idea, the School Board will be bringing in about $109 million more dollars this year than last year, which really shows that the values here are really going in the right direction. The next page that I just wanted to, that I handed to the commission, was basically some things I thought were kind of interesting. There are almost 390,000 homesteads exemptions here in Broward County, that's people that have made this their primary residence. You have another 21,000 people that are low-income seniors that get additional exemptions, there are widowed exemptions, but one that I'm very proud about is the full exemption for totally and permanently disabled persons that are service-connected. So basically, if you are a member of the military, or you're a veteran, and you became permanently disabled while serving us, you're entitled to a full property tax exemption, and countywide, we have 2,021 American heroes that became fully disabled while serving us, that are entitled to a full property tax exemption. It's more than in most counties within the state of Florida, and I'm very proud of that, and that's really a testament to our county, and that those folks wanna live here. The next thing I wanted to bring up before I get into Southwest Ranches, is, you know, I am so blessed to have walked into an office that runs like a well-oiled machine. One of your fellow residents here in Southwest Ranches is Lori Parish. Lori is a great friend, recently she bought 40,000 bees, and she's loving it. And, you know, the reason that I'm Property Appraiser today is because she retired, and so she built an office that runs very, very well. And so what I've been able to do is kind of put my own stamp on it. And one thing that I realized when I was elected to this office, and when I took office, was a lot of people pay too much in property taxes, 'cause they don't know, always know what they're entitled to. So we have a very large outreach department that goes to the county every single day, and it educates folks about what they can be entitled to, and we help sign them up for tax-saving exemptions on the spot. And to give you an idea, our outreach department has attended about 359 events, and they've assisted about 17,000 people since I took office in January, something I'm very proud about, and I wanted to bring that up, because you may see one of our tents here sometime pretty soon, and if you have a question about your property taxes, about your value, please stop by, because they wanna assist you, and they wanna help you. The next page that I have, this pertains specifically to Southwest Ranches, and for the folks behind me, the first number is not the number that you'll be putting your millage rate on. This is really just an interesting number. If you took all of the property here in Southwest Ranches, and a buyer paid a seller for all that property, you would get approximately $2,444,000 for the 2016 tax year. This year, there's about an 8.05% increase, you would get about $2,208,000 that a buyer would pay to a seller for the property here in Southwest Ranches. The next page is really what the folks behind me are gonna look at when they set your millage rates. The 2016 taxable value for Southwest Ranches, when it comes to just residential and commercial, is approximately $1,224,880. And you'll notice, if we are dealing just with residential and commercial, this doesn't include tangible personal property, there's approximately a 7.43% increase in value, which would be $1,315,926,000. That's the number they're gonna be utilizing to determine what your millage rates are, and also how much money they need in their budget to provide services to you. And just to let you know, and the folks behind me, if you include tangible personal property in that, if the Town of Southwest Ranches does not change its millage rate, then they would be bringing in an extra $425,810 more this year than they did last year, which I think is a very healthy number, and a very good thing. The next page that I had was basically here in Southwest Ranches, what you have when it comes to exemptions. You have about 2,015 people who have a homestead exemption, you have about 65 low-income seniors who have an additional exemption, you have 155 widowed persons with an exemption, and then another number that I just wanted to bring up once again, because I think this is great, is that full exemption for veterans with service-connected, total and permanent disabilities, here in Southwest Ranches, you have eight of those American heroes living there, and I think that's a wonderful, wonderful thing, and something you all should be very proud about. Finally, the last thing I wanted to bring up before, I wanted to talk to the commission about something that we've done recently, is I am a very big proponent of social media. I love social media. I love Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn, everything you could possibly think of. And at the Broward County Commission, not the Broward County Commission, that was last year, at the Broward County Property Appraisers' Office, we're very connected, and if you all, to social media, and if you all would like to follow us on Facebook, or on Twitter, or on Instagram, it's just @MartyCareBCPA, that's @M-A-R-T-Y-K-I-A-R-B-C-P-A. We have lots of tax-saving information, and helpful information on there for you. And the last thing I just wanted to bring up to the commission before I take any questions, was I handed something out that I brought up, because the commission and your wonderful administrator were so nice enough to host an event here for me to talk to folks in the agricultural industry in Southwest Ranches, when I first was elected as Property Appraiser and took office. And something that I realized very quickly was that a lot of folks don't know what they need to do to get an agricultural classification on their property. And just to let you know, it's very important, if somebody wants to have an agricultural business on their property, they should have an agricultural classification, which is a significant reduction in property taxes. And the reason being is because we wanna encourage agriculture, we wanna encourage farms. Conversely, folks should not get it if they don't have an agricultural business. And so what we've done is, at the suggestion of your wonderful town council, and also with your wonderful administrator, we've put together two helper brochures, that we've been providing to folks who would like to have an agricultural classification on their property. The first one is basically a guide to agricultural classification of land, and the second one is basically helpful suggestions as to how to set up a business plan, which is something we look for in order to give an agricultural classification. And just wanted to let you know something I thought was interesting, the Just Value Agricultural Use of Land. Basically, what all the agricultural land is worth here in Southwest Ranches is about $157 million. There is, when people have that agricultural classification, approximately $153 million folks don't pay taxes on. So out of that $157 million, only $4 million is taxed. So as you can see, that's a significant amount of money taken off the tax roll, and that's why what we're doing in our office is making sure that if you're entitled to an agricultural classification, you get it, if you're not, you don't get it, because it has real ramifications on not just their budgets, but also on the taxes you pay as well. With that said, I just wanna thank you all so much for allowing me to be here. I really wanna thank your wonderful mayor, should I turn around?
No, you should say it like that, that's good.
Your wonderful mayor, all the town council members, you have a great attorney, he's one of the best legal minds I know, Russell Muniz is awesome. You know, years ago, my dad was the mayor of the Town of Davie, and we were also the attorneys for the Town of Davie, and Southwest Ranches stole Russell over here. What was Davie's loss is Southwest Ranches' gain, you know, and of course, you have a wonderful attorney, and Andy is a great guy, and that's not just 'cause I walked to his door years ago, not knowing who it was, asking for his vote, and he didn't slam it in my face. So, great guy, I just wanna thank you all so much for what you all do, and for this great town that you have here in Southwest Ranches. With that said, Mr. Mayor, is there any questions that you all have that I can answer?
I don't know, do we have any questions?
The next page that I have, this pertains specifically to Southwest Ranches. And for the folks behind me, the first number is not the number that you'll be putting your millage rate on. This is really just an interesting number. If you took all of the property here in Southwest Ranches, and a buyer paid a seller for all that property, you would get approximately $2,444 million for the 2016 tax year. This year, there's about an 8.05% increase. You would get about $2,208 million that a buyer would pay to a seller for the property here in Southwest Ranches. The next page is really what the folks behind me are going to look at when they set your millage rates. The 2016 taxable value for Southwest Ranches, when it comes to just residential and commercial, is approximately $1,224,885,360. And you'll notice, if we are dealing just with residential and commercial, this doesn't include tangible personal property, there's approximately a 7.43% increase in value, which would be $1,315,921,630. That's the number they're going to be utilizing to determine what your millage rates are, and also how much money they need in their budget to provide services to you. And just to let you know, and the folks behind me, if you include tangible personal property in that, if the town of Southwest Ranches does not change its millage rate, then they would be bringing in an extra $425,81 more this year than they did last year, which I think is a very healthy number, and a very good thing. The next page that I had, was basically here in Southwest Ranches, what you have when it comes to exemptions. You have about 2,015 people who have a homestead exemption. You have about 65 low-income seniors who have an additional exemption. You have 155 widowed persons with an exemption. And then another number that I just wanted to bring up once again, because I think this is great, is that full exemption for veterans with service-connected, total and permanent disabilities. Here in Southwest Ranches, you have eight of those American heroes living there, and I think that's a wonderful, wonderful thing, and something you all should be very proud about. Finally, the last thing I wanted to bring up before, I wanted to talk to the commission about something that we've done recently, is I am a very big proponent of social media. I love social media. I love Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn, everything you could possibly think of. And at the Broward County Commission, not the Broward County Commission, that was last year, at the Broward County Property Appraisers Office, we're very connected, and if you all to social media. And if you all would like to follow us on Facebook, or on Twitter, or on Instagram, it's just @MartyCareBCPA. That's @M-A-R-T-Y-K-I-A-R-B-C-P-A. We have lots of tax-saving information, and helpful information on there for you. And the last thing I just wanted to bring up to the commission before I take any questions, was I handed something out that I brought up because the commission and your wonderful administrator were so nice enough to host an event here for me to talk to folks in the agricultural industry in Southwest Ranches, when I first was elected as property appraiser and took office. And something that I realized very quickly, was that a lot of folks don't know what they need to do to get an agricultural classification on their property. And just to let you know, it's very important. If somebody wants to have an agricultural business on their property, they should have an agricultural classification, which is a significant reduction in property taxes. And the reason being is because we want to encourage agriculture, we want to encourage farms. Conversely, folks should not get it if they don't have an agricultural business. And so what we've done, is at the suggestion of your wonderful town council, and also with your wonderful administrator, we've put together two helper brochures, that we've been providing to folks who would like to have an agricultural classification on their property. The first one is basically a guide to agricultural classification of land, and the second one is basically helpful suggestions as to how to set up a business plan, which is something we look for in order to give an agricultural classification. And just wanted to let you know, something I thought was interesting. The just value agricultural use of land. Basically, what all the agricultural land is worth here in Southwest Ranches, is about $157 million. There is, when people have that agricultural classification, approximately $153 million folks don't pay taxes on. So out of that $157 million, only $4 million is taxed. So as you can see, that's a significant amount of money taken off the tax roll. And that's why what we're doing in our office, is making sure that if you're entitled to an agricultural classification, you get it. If you're not, you don't get it, because it has real ramifications on not just their budgets, but also on the taxes you pay as well. With that said, I just want to thank you all so much for allowing me to be here. I really want to thank your wonderful mayor, should I turn around?
No, you can say it like that, that's good.
Your wonderful mayor, all the town council members, you have a great attorney, he's one of the best legal minds I know. Russell Muniz is awesome. You know, years ago, my dad was the mayor of the town of Davie, and we were also the attorneys for the town of Davie. And Southwest Ranches stole Russell over here. What was Davie's loss is Southwest Ranches' gain. You know, and of course you have a wonderful attorney, and Andy is a great guy, and that's not just because I walked to his door years ago, not knowing who it was, asking for his vote, and he didn't slam it in my face. So, great guy. I just want to thank you all so much for what you all do, and for this great town that you have here in Southwest Ranches. With that said, Mr. Mayor, is there any questions that you all have that I can answer?
I don't know, do we have any questions back here? I think more the audience probably is. Dee, you got a question?
I've got a million, but we'd better make an appointment.
Of course, absolutely. And I have to tell you something, may I, Mr. Mayor, calling people?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say something that I didn't know about, except for the last few years, that when you go to pay your bill, you make out your check, and you go to Wells Fargo, give them the check, that's when you have your account, you don't have to worry about the check getting lost in the mail, it doesn't cost anybody, and there's more on every form.
You know what, I have to tell you, there, oh yeah, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. And I have to tell you something that I think is really amazing, that just impressed the heck out of me, and I want to thank you for this, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is the first city I've been to in Broward County, where I've asked the city, the town council, if I'd like to, if they had any questions, and where the mayor said, "No Marty, but the audience may." That's awesome. And if I look around here, I don't see one lawyer, I don't see one lobbyist, I see just residents of Southwest Ranches, and I think that is a wonderful, awesome thing. And it's a testament to this town that you all created. That is really awesome. I've never had that happen to me before, and I think that is pretty incredible. That really is, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's a pleasure.
May I, oh, thank you. Yes, sir.
I've been hearing that there is a reduction for your taxes if you're partially disabled.
Yes. Yes, that's a great, thank you for bringing that up. There are a few veteran exemptions, in all of them you have to be disabled. The biggest one is the full, when you become fully and permanently disabled, while, and it's service-connected, has to be service-connected. That's when you're fully exempt from property taxes. There's another one that's also very large, which is a combat-disabled veteran. So if somebody is, becomes disabled in combat, the percentage of their disability is the percentage of exemption they get in their property taxes. So if their letter from the VA basically says they're 60% disabled, they're 60% exempted from paying property taxes. 70%, 70% exempted. And then any veteran that is disabled, and is not service-connected, is entitled to a smaller exemption, which is about $5,000 of value off the tax roll, and that is, that's about $10 a year, saving them in taxes. But what's neat about it is, is just another exemption that you can add on to other exemptions you're entitled to, and at the end of the day, I believe that every dollar in people's pockets really helps. It definitely does. Thank you for bringing that up, and thank you for correcting me, you're 100% right, I should have brought that up. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Okay, listen.
Oh, thank you.
The floor is yours, Marty.
Oh, thank you. Portability, that's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up. Now, our office, aside from the things that I spoke about, we are also a wealth of information. We can basically tell you what your taxes will be on just about any piece of property that you decide to buy. We have a tax estimator on our website, you can call our office, and also there's something called portability, that gives you the opportunity to move to another home and not be taxed out of that home. Here's how it works. In 2008, the voters of the state of Florida decided that they wanted to amend the constitution, and they put in portability. The way it works is, you have your existing home and your existing homestead. Once you file for homestead, not only does it take off $50,000 of value you don't have to pay taxes on, but most importantly, it caps your taxable value at 3% a year, or the Consumer Price Index. To give you an idea, this year, the Consumer Price Index is 2.1%. So if you have a residential home, and it's your homestead, it can't go up more than 2.1%. So let's say you've been there for a while. If you've been there for a while, your value is, it doesn't go up more than 2.1% or 3% a year, the Consumer Price Index, that's your taxable value, but your market value can be way up here, basically what a buyer would pay to a seller. And so your taxable value's here, your market value's here, you have all this value in the middle that you don't pay taxes on. Up to $500,000 can be moved. And so let's say you want to buy another home and make that your homestead. If it's a home of equal value or greater value, you can take that, that you don't pay taxes on, and you can move it to your new homestead, and then you won't pay taxes on it. If you're going down, then what you can do is you take a percentage of it, and let me give you an example. Some time ago, I spoke to a gentleman at the Broward County Governmental Center, and you could tell this gentleman was very well-off. He had a very nice suit on, he also had a Rolex that I thought was pretty, it looked like a watch that I had that was a Rolex with the C that I bought on the streets of New York, so it was a little bit different. And I started talking to him, I go, "Hi sir, I'm your Broward County Property Appraiser, Marty Care." He goes, "I know who you are, Marty, you walked to my door in Weston years ago asking for my vote." I go, "Did you vote for me?" He goes, "I didn't." I'm like, "That's okay." I'm like, "But how can I help you?" He goes, "Well, I sold my home in Weston Hills, that I owned since the 90s, for about a million dollars. I then moved to Martin County and bought a condo for about a million dollars. But I don't understand, because my property taxes in Weston Hills were way down here, and now in Martin County, they're way up here." And I go, "Well, did you utilize portability?" And he goes, "What's that, something for income tax purposes?" I'm like, "No, no, here's the way it works." Brought him into our office, and here's what we were able to do for him. He owned his home since the 90s, and it was his homestead, so his taxable value couldn't go up more than 3% a year. At the end, his taxable value was here, but his market value, basically what a buyer would pay to a seller, was way up here. He accumulated the maximum amount, $500,000, that you can transfer within that value. We were able to take that value, and move it to his new condo in Martin County, so now his taxes are similar to what they were in Weston. Portability is a great thing. If you are going to move anywhere in the state of Florida, please take advantage of it, because it'll make sure that you won't suffer from very high property taxes in your next home. Great question. Yes, sure, and I'll go right to yourself. Yes.
Is there a time limit? That's if you own a home, and you sold it home, and you buy another one? Is there a time limit?
Yes. There is, that's a great question. I love this crowd, you guys are so astute, and you catch on the things that I forget to say, I think it's great. There is. And this is where I always tell folks, before you make any purchase, before you sell your home, even if you're thinking about it, call our office and we'll walk you through the process. Because at the end of the day, we're just public servants. You all were nice enough to elect me to this position, we don't make money off this. We're just here to serve you, and that's all we really want to do. We have no other agenda but to help you. And when it comes to portability, you have to utilize your portability, that savings, you have to move that within two tax years of relinquishing your previous homestead. So here's where it can mess people up. Let's say, for example, somebody moves in October, let's say they move in October of 2017. Technically, their tax year started on January 1st of 2017. So they would only have about a year and three months to move that over, or they're going to lose it. A lot of people think it's the day that they give up their homestead or sell their property, it's not, it's the January 1st of that year is when the clock actually started. It's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up. What's it?
Statutory.
It is, all statutory.
None whatsoever.
None whatsoever. What Bob asked was, that's statutory, and it is. In this job, it's kind of interesting. This is the first job that I've had where I'm not a policymaker. You know, when I was in the legislature, on the county commission, we got to make the law. Now, I'm an administrator. I basically administrate whatever laws are out there, whether they're fair or not fair, I got to do whatever the law is. And there are some things where I just have no discretion, we just follow the letter of the law as it's written. That's a great question. John, of course.
Are you wanting to learn some portability? I have a relative who divorced, and the other partner never bought another house, but how does that work?
Great.
How do we split it 50/50?
That's a great question. Did everybody hear John's question? Just for the camera, basically, John asked, let's say, for example, a couple owns a home, they've owned it for a long time, they've accumulated a lot of savings, and then they get divorced. How does portability work for them? Well, the first thing I have to tell you is, every single property is different and independent. What might be right for one property may be different for another property based on the facts, but I'll tell you generally what would happen. The first thing that would happen, let's say, for example, the husband and the wife split, and let's say the wife keeps the home. If they don't make any other arrangements amongst themselves, all that benefit stays with that home. So the Save Our Homes stays with that home, and later on, if the wife wants to move to a new home, she takes that with her. But what they can do, and what they can agree to do, if they want to sell the home, what they can do, let's say they're not going to keep the marital home, they're going to sell it, then they can split that portion of the benefit amongst each other, when they buy their new home and bring it with them. But there are a lot of scenarios I've learned that have arisen with this, and actually, we work on these things, just about every week, we have an issue with regard to this. And I have learned that every single situation is a little bit different than another, and so things, so usually you have different outcomes each time, but if you like, have him give me a holler, and I'll talk to him about it, and see if there's a way that we can help him. Great question, thank you for bringing that up, John, I really appreciate it. Does anybody else have any other questions? Well, I just want to thank you so much for allowing me to come, and the last thing I wanted to say, again, you know, I'm just a public servant, I feel so honored to be able to serve you all. And if there is anything that I can do, that my office can do, any way we can help, please call me, please email me, please contact us at any time. I just want to make you proud of me, and I just feel so thrilled to be able to represent you. And also, I wanted to congratulate, I think that she had left, the young lady that just retired. I think that is wonderful, and I love this story about her being on the couch with the radio clearing the calls. And I also wanted to congratulate you all as well. You know, I'll tell you, you all have a whole lot of medals, and I think you all are going to do some wonderful things. And I was thinking about something, I was so glad that the folks behind me decided to honor you all, and also the assistant fire chief, because, you know, I love being a public servant. The folks behind me love being public servants, we love being elected officials. But the big difference between us, in my opinion, and you all, is we don't put our lives on the line, serving our country, or serving our communities. You know, if you're a firefighter, you're running into burning buildings. If you're in the military, you're going into very dangerous situations to keep us safe. We don't do that, and that makes you all incredibly special, much more special than I could ever be. So thank you all so much for what you do, and thank you all so much for having me. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Marty, anytime, it's a pleasure to have you come speak with us, and just anytime you need space, need airtime, let us know, we'll accommodate you. Awesome. All right, public comments, Keith?
Mayor, we only have one speaker tonight, David Kaczynski, David?
Counsel, David Kaczynski, 6411 Holliday Trail, I won't be as long-winded as my friend Marty. Coming to speak to you as the president of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association, just to remind everybody that next Wednesday evening, at our homeowner association meeting, we're going to feature Carrie Cashar from Broward County Renew Pace Program, where she's going to be talking to anybody that's there, speaking about the, how homeowners can receive upfront financing for certain home improvements. So I like to encourage everybody to come out, and take notes, and take advantage of this great program. Second, I'd like to thank the council for encouraging the legislature for passing regulations on sober homes. It's sitting on the governor's desk right now, and in the current issue of the Wagler, which we're doing final edits this evening, I wrote a little brief synopsis. It's a very detailed legislation, I just went over some of the details, but thank you very much for pushing the legislature in regulating these homes. Thank you. Have a good evening.
That's it. Okay. Board reports. Board reports, any board reports?
There are none.
None? Seeing the board reports, or council member comments? You want to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
I just have a quick one, I just wanted to, well, you know, what a great evening, all the proclamations and everything, this has really been a great evening here in the ranches. But I did want to just mention one thing, that going out west, the Country Estates Fishing Hole Park, as you can see, there's a lot of work going on out there. They're putting in the ball fields, I saw Aster here tonight earlier, and it was great to see his vision starting to become a reality out there. So it's great to see the work underway, and it won't be long, and we'll be able to use a whole nother section of that park, so, thank you.
Dee?
I'm good.
You're good. Freddie? You're good. Eric?
Yeah, I've got a few things, thank you, thank you everybody for coming. First off, let me thank the ROTC cadets. You know, when I look out there and I see you all, and I see the future of America, and it looks pretty good. I got to tell you, it looks pretty good up here, you guys make us proud. And please continue, because it's a nice, it's a nice vision, it's a nice sight to see. And we appreciate it very, very much. And I also want to thank Marty, Marty Care, he really should be named Mr. Broward County, that's really what he should be called, I mean, he is an emissary for everything, and he is Mr. Congeniality, and he does such a great job. I can't say enough about him, I've never seen, I've never seen him have a bad day. Yeah, it's like unbelievable. Couple things I want to mention is, coming up, we have December here, yep, there she is, we have Summer Solstice in the park on the 21st, first day of summer, and it's kind of an interesting event, we have the Two Saddles, and one of them marks the setting sun, if I've got that right. And December's always present there, and leads that, and it's very nice, if you have time to go see that. On the 24th of June, we have two events coming up, one is a amateur radio event, put on at the Equestrian Park, and it's an all-day affair. And the amateur radio enthusiasts will have set up complete mobile communications, and they will be trying to make as many contacts as they can around the world, and you can participate in that, and they will show you how to do it, and if you're interested in becoming licensed for it. So I think it's worthwhile to come by there, it's a free event, and it's pretty interesting. We also have, on the Parks Foundation, at the Rolling Oaks Barn, at 6:00 PM, we have the History of Rum. It's a $35 cost per person, it's going to be a couple hours, it's being put on by Aster's brother, he is the guest speaker, Dr. Franklin Knight, he has a doctorate at John Hopkins University, he is an expert on the Caribbean and its history, and he is going to tell us exactly how rum has chartered a lot of what is going on in the islands in modern day, today, starting in the 1500s. And it'd be extremely informative, and I've read several of his books, and he's a very, very brilliant man, he's very, very interesting to listen to him talk. So he will be, he will be conducting that, and there'll be some samplings, and some auctions of some pretty rare rums, so I just want to mention that. So it'll be worthwhile. Mention also that we have hazmat in the park at the Rolling Oaks Barn on the 8th of July, from 8 to 2, and the sheriff brings the shredder out, starting at 10:00 AM, from 10 to, I think 10 to 2. And you can bring all your personal documents there, and they shred them, and it's really worthwhile to have that done, especially with as much identity theft and problematic that we have, problems that we have with people trying to get our personal information. Let's face facts, in our zip code, I can tell you honestly, I get offers for credit cards and credit lines every day. Every single day. And also, somebody has a determined thief can raid your mailbox, and, you know, or your trash, and put that in, and put a different address on it. So, you know, utilize the shredding services, utilize the hazardous material services. Just want to mention, coming up, that we have our annual photo contest. The photos are due in by July 15th, and they can be about anything in our town, and, except people. That's the only caveat, is you don't, you can't take any pictures with people in it. take any pictures with people in it. And please submit them. It's available on the website and it's here at Town Hall. And it gets incorporated into our town calendar and it's really kind of neat when you can be Mr. March, for lack of a better way of saying it, or something like that. So, that's coming up here in the next month or next couple of weeks for the deadline for that. So, please turn in your photos. And that about sums it up, Mayor.
All right. Awesome. Okay. I'm going to pass the gavel because I want to, the Vice Mayor, because I want to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the Chair of the Comprehensive Planning Board be removed from his seat.
I'm going to second it.
All right. I'm disappointed to hear that. This member of the board is actually my appointment on the board. Let's give this appointment a name. His name is Noel Hollingsworth. He's a man that's been in this town since before this town was formed. He's a gentleman that has been on this board, I believe, since it was formed. He's someone who has volunteered for this town for decades, literally decades. He's someone who has, unlike all of us up here, never taken a penny for all the service he's done over all those years. He's passionate about this town. There's no two ways about it. He's passionate about this town. He's passionate about keeping this town rural. There's no two ways about it. He fights for it, day in, day out. He fights for it. So, what's this about? Last week, we had a comp plan meeting and Mayor was there, a number of people were there. The board was there, obviously. There was a resident there that wanted to get the opinion of the board based on a piece of property that is west of US 27. I don't think that Noel handled the situation well at all. I think he handled it very poorly. I think he was disrespectful to this resident. I think he was disrespectful in his attitude towards the resident. But he didn't do anything that was, in my estimation, even close to being thrown off the board for it. And I called him and I said, "Noel, I don't think you handled that very well." And he as much admitted to me that, yeah, he didn't handle it very well, but he got very passionate about it. And so, I believe he's learned from it. I believe he's going to do better. But that's not what really worries me about this event. I would hope that this board would respect my appointment to it, to that board. But I guess we'll find out that tonight. But that's not what really worries me about this whole event. I'll tell you what really worries me about this event, is that during that meeting, our mayor at one point said, "Either you approve this and vote on it tonight, or you won't be on this board next month." And so, now here we are.
I think the interpretation, the way you said that, is incorrect.
Well, it's almost a direct quote. So, I'll let you interpret it however you want to interpret it. I'm not the only one that was there. There was a lot of people there. We could line them up and I think you'll find that my rendition is pretty darn close.
Well, I think what they were going to do is they were going to table it.
They were. They wanted to have...
For 30 days.
They wanted to have a...
We set them for... Hold on.
I think I've got the floor. You can have the floor when you get done.
Go right ahead.
And they wanted 30 days to think about it and then vote it next time. But that was not going to be appropriate. So, the threat was made. And I guess this evening, we're seeing the results of that threat. I can't tell you how disappointed I am that... I personally believe that there is no place. We have people on these boards because we want to know their opinion. We have people on these boards because we value their opinion. It is never our job, never our job for any of us on this board to in any way try and dictate a position to anyone on the board. I've got something here tonight. In this envelope, this is going to give you an idea of who Noel is. This envelope and this letter was given to me over a decade ago by Noel Hollingsworth. This is his resignation from the board. He gave it to me on the day that he accepted the position on the board. And he said, "Steve, if I ever am so out of line that you don't think I should be on this board, all you have to do is open this letter, turn it in to the administration, and I'm off the board." He said, "I've already resigned." That's the kind of guy he is. That's the kind of quality that he is as far as being able to stand up behind who he is and what he does. I'm going to relate to another story. This took place back in 2004. At the time, I was not on the council yet. I was the chairman of the Drainage Committee. And we had an election in town. We had Freddie Fiskelli was running for mayor. And I believe in Freddie. I think we had two great candidates there. I don't think we had a bad candidate. But we had two great candidates. But I'd gotten to know Freddie. I know the quality person he is. And so, I supported Freddie in his run. The meeting after the election, which Freddie did not win, the council took me off as chairman of the board. Matter of fact, they took me off the board completely of the drainage. Retribution, that's what it was. So, I've been there. I've seen it firsthand. I know how it works. I've been the recipient. Thank you very much. What's going on tonight is outrageous. We've got a quality resident who's given years to this town and not asked for anything in return. And this is the thanks they get. On a night when we've given thanks to so many people who have done so many things for our town, this is how we follow it up. I would implore this council to not proceed on this action.
All right. Let me jump in, since you mentioned names, which I was trying to avoid from mentioning names because of the resident. Listen, clearly, it has a name. But the issue for me was not to mention a name under the circumstances to not slam any residents. All the residents on all our boards volunteer and give of their time. Noel has done lots. I thank him immensely. He's done a great job, you know, never asked for anything, but then nobody else does either. But he has a wealth of information and has been great. This is not the first event. For Ronnie Bergeron, he slammed and beat on him for over an hour. I don't know how you forgot to bring that one up. So, I'm going to tell you, it's not the first incident. It's the second or third incident. And the comment he made to me that if I didn't like it, take it to the council. Did he not say that?
He did say that.
Okay. And I told him I was.
Yes, you did.
Here I am, and that's what I'm doing.
Yes, you are.
Okay? So, his respect or whatever in that meeting, not only to the resident, but to me, was atrocious. And it was for Ronnie Bergeron. It's not the first or second time it's happened here. So, I would tell you, I think he's a great guy. I love him dearly. But, you know, I don't think he belongs as the Chair of that board anymore. I don't think he belongs on it. But that's another question. So, I would tell you, I didn't threaten him at all. I just, we had a conversation and it went back and forth, okay? And I thought I held my tongue pretty well at that meeting. So, I've got to say that they wanted to delay stuff. We brought him something. We sent him something to look at. And they wanted to get other people surrounding, which were two or three people. I think it was FPNL, South Florida Drainage District, and Sharon Glass that owns Pop Gun Drain, if I'm correct. And I don't think any of them are going to show up. I was fine with him inviting other people, but I didn't want him to delay looking at that matter. Because that process takes nine months or a year to even get it moving down the road. And here we have a resident in town looking for a piece of property that we get zero tax dollars on, that is willing to spend money to get us tax dollars. So, I just wasn't getting it. I'm kicking the can down the road. I was perfectly fine with what he was requesting, but not delaying it and not addressing his other stuff in another meeting. Dee, go ahead.
It's not about what was being addressed. It was how Noel handled it. He's done it in the past. You set a clear example for every board member that sits on a board, that this behavior is acceptable then. You can do this and we'll just slap your hand. There isn't one person sitting in here that I can see right now that doesn't have passion for this town, that hasn't walked away from it, that cares deeply about this town. This isn't just a town. It is our town, just as much as it is Noel's. But it's not just at the meetings. He's done when he's come before council. The president said it's setting. If you sit on a board, and it was said by George Morris, that Georgia told him, "Noel, I believe this is a personal thing. He was taking it too personal. When does it quit? When does it end?" You cannot treat the residents like that. I've come to a council meeting before and gotten out of line and I've been knocked down a peg or two. And are we making the exception because it's Noel Hollingsworth? He's a nice guy. He's done great for the town. But so has Bob Hartman and everybody else that sits in here, John. I mean, we've all done our fair share. That doesn't give him the right or the privilege to treat other people like that. And the words that were used were very, very offensive to that man, extremely offensive. So, if you want to just remove him as the Chair, then remove him as the Chair.
Let me jump in if I may. The other thing, he was getting involved in things that had no business of that board or what that board does. He was talking about the gun range and what direction they're firing in, if it's going to be dangerous, and that they had a say in it. Clearly, they have no say in that. I don't know what he was sticking his nose in. So...
Well, let me clarify. So, this property is right next to the gun range. So, I think it does have immediate impact on what it is. And I don't think asking for 30 days to get more help and opinion on making the right answer is in any way an outrageous. It's not kicking the can down the road. It's asking for 30 days so you can make a wise decision. Since when is that worth, you know, you ask extra 30 days, so then that means that you should be kicked off the board?
What does that person or what does that board have to do with what the gun range does versus the people buying the property behind it?
Because it's right next door.
What does the Comprehensive Planning Board have to do with...
Because they're both affected by the same wording change that we would have in the land use plan and the comp plan. That's why. They're right next door. You make change to one, you've made change to the other. That's why.
Okay. But that still doesn't dictate the use as far as what direction they're shooting on a gun range and what they're doing on the gun range. You've got no say over that gun range.
So, are we here to dictate and evaluate every conversation that goes on in every board? And if it doesn't meet our personal approval, then we kick them off the board? Is that what we're saying?
No. It's the way that the people were spoken to and treated on more than one occasion, on at least three occasions. And I think it's unacceptable. I just don't think that goes. I know he's done a lot of good, but I'm sorry.
Can I jump in for a minute?
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. Obviously, this is a passionate subject. Steve, I respect your pick. I respect your choices. Advisory members, you know, they need to behave in a responsible manner. They represent the town to the everyday common resident. And, you know, to all members of the public, regardless if you're a resident or not and you come in, you know. And I don't think we should tolerate anybody giving another person in any of these meetings a condescending manner or bullying, because that's really what was going on there. I was at both confrontations and it was pretty clear. Okay? I mean, if Noel wants to get up here at the podium and yell at us all day long, knock yourself out. You know, we're big boys here, you know. But a resident should not be intimidated about never coming to a meeting because they're afraid they're going to get yelled at or something to that effect. And that's really what the upshot's going to be in the future. You know, having said that, I think a line is crossed. You know, the boards are not elected. They're appointed. And they represent all of us and our wishes and concerns. And I don't ever want to see a resident afraid to approach a board because, oh, that scary guy is, or a scary woman is, you know, in charge of it, you know, for something like that. I think just the fact that we're discussing this, I think, is pretty important. And I think a message is being sent, just this discussion in general, you know. It's pretty, we're pretty passionate up here as well as the residents are out there. There's no doubt about that. You know, and as such, Steve, I will support your position on this. But a line has been crossed and it should never be crossed again. So, I want you to know that. But bad behavior should not be rewarded in those settings. You want to yell at us at the podium all? I know. And I'm not blaming you. Don't misunderstand. If that's what it sounds like, it's not. But, you know, we're up here. We, you know, we take it.
Right.
You know, something like that. But when you've got an advisory board that residents would come to and be afraid to come to because somebody is taking on bullying tactics or condescending manner, I don't think we can stand for that, you know. And we do have a code of ethics, if I'm correct, on all of that that needs to be adhered to, you know. And just the fact that we're discussing this right now is speaking volumes, you know. But I will respect your position and your pick, you know. But like I said, it's a thin ice position right now. So, I just want to mention that.
Thank you.
I'll not only add to that. If you choose not to remove him, or we choose not to vote, I would definitely say he cannot be the Chair of that committee again. If you're going to choose to leave him on there, which I'm okay with, if you want to do that and let this be a slap on the hand, I didn't want to air this in public or have names attached to it. That wasn't my intention at all. So, but I would tell you, if by vote, he stays on there, I would request that he not be the Chair of that committee ever again. Go ahead, Dee.
But let me just say something. The board chooses who their Chair is. We don't pick and choose for them. So, to step up now and take that authority away from them or that privilege or whatever, I don't agree with that. You know, that's their thing. Like I said, it just sent a loud, clear message to most of the boards. That is, as far as I'm concerned, one of the most important boards we have in this town. It sets all the presidents and everything that we have. And it wasn't the first time. It wasn't the second time. And so, you're telling people who sit on the board, you know, if you mess up, don't worry about it. You get another chance or you get another chance. You know, that's not right. That behavior was just, and you admitted it, it was very disrespectful.
It was disrespectful. I agree.
It was disrespectful. I'm not really sure...
I mean, the resident called me after the meeting and said, "What was that?"
I'm not really sure myself. You know, I have mixed emotions about it, but it's, like I said, you just, they represent the town. People call him. They call him for advice. And some people don't come to the meetings and they would never go before that board because, believe it or not, they're very intimidated by him. They're afraid. They don't want to be berated and cussed at. No reason for that.
I don't think there was any cussing going on in that meeting. It was loud. It was passionate. It was disrespectful.
Would you like me to quote it? Because the man took extreme offense. He's a very religious person. Even though he's a construction guy, and we all know how construction men... Noel used a phrase, and I knew right then and there, that was it. So, and I'd rather not repeat it.
Some inappropriate language was used. Okay. And I'm the deaf guy in the room. I said some inappropriate language. Excuse me. I'm sorry. Inappropriate language was used and I'm the hard-of-hearing, the deaf guy in the room. So, if I picked up on it, you know, everybody else could get it loud and clear.
Freddie, you got any input?
Well, let me ask you this. You know, kind of, this is obviously passion on both ends. What do you think, Steve? Do you think anything should be done? Any...
Like I said...
He is your appointment.
He is my appointment. He is my appointment. And, you know, I did speak to him after the meeting because I was disappointed in how it went. I was disappointed in how he handled it. I didn't think he handled it properly. I thought he was disrespectful. I admit all those things. You know, I understand that.
Yeah, but he didn't stop.
I know, this is not a time to bring out the laundry list of stuff, but I can give you numerous residents that won't go to other board meetings because of other chairman that they felt were disrespectful for them. It happens. It happens. Is Noel, I think, the, you know, take it to a different level? Yes, I do. Yes, I do. And that's why we had the conversation. And as I said, I, you know, I sit here before you, and I think, I can only give my half of how I felt my conversation went with Noel afterwards. And I felt like he understood that, not because I told him, but because I think he thought about it, that, you know, he got too passionate, was over the top, was less than respectful than what he should have been. And I think that if he could have done it over again, he would have done it differently. Does that mean that there won't be a meeting two months from now, six months from now, three years from now, where he gets passionate and out of control? Again, out of control is a little too strong, because I think he was in control, he just was very strong. And it could happen again. I believe that I did the appropriate thing by talking to him about it and letting him know that I found it unacceptable, the way he, and that was our conversation. And I'm hoping that it's better. I can't guarantee that it's better, but I understand the, I think, the feelings of the council here. I will tell you that we've, I was just as disappointed, Doug, honestly, that, you know, that there was this threat to take him off there because he would not follow your direction. And I think that's just as strong.
I think what I said is I would take it back from them, and they wouldn't have it next month.
I think you said that he would not be on the board next month. That's what you said. So I think that sort of a threat is worse than what Noel did. I'll just put it that way. I think that's worse.
Wow.
Because we've got to...
So how long are we going to allow this?
If we can't respect the opinions of those that are on our boards, and we threaten them to take them off when they disagree with us.
Okay, well, it wasn't the first time. It wasn't the second time. It was at least the third or fourth time that I know of. And so my question do is, how long are we going to let this play out, and how many more times are you going to let it happen before we take an action?
Because I can't predict the future.
If he stays on, it happens again, I'm going to be a little irate about it next time.
I have a question, Steve.
Yeah.
If he wasn't your appointment, and really be honest about it, if he wasn't your appointment, and you had somebody that you just really thought was great for the job, would you still feel the same?
If he wasn't my appointment, I, you know, it's hard, I'm trying to be as honest as I can with you. I believe that if he wasn't my appointment, that I would respect the council member that appointed whoever, you know, that appointed him, and not override that. I really believe that I would respect that. But I think I would, you know, make the wishes known, or make my feelings known, as you all have made them tonight, that you found it unacceptable. And, you know, so I don't have any problem with the fact that you all are expressing the feelings you are. I think that's honest. I think that on many points, I agree with you, you know. I agree that it was disrespectful. I never fought that. I mean, that was part of where I started. So I get that. But I also believe that there's two sides to every coin. And Noel has an incredible base of knowledge. I would stack his base of knowledge on the comp plan and the understanding of that against anyone in town, including myself, and, you know, anybody in town, literally anybody in town. And so I think he brings value to the town. I think he brings value to the residents of our town, being in the position he's in.
Did he ever say to you, you know, Steve, can you get me the guy's number? I mean, I'll call, I'll apologize, you know? I mean, that would have been, you know, that would have said a lot.
Yep. No, it did not come on the conversation.
You know, it's a sad event. I'm not pleased to even bring it up.
Well, I'm not pleased to have to discuss it either. I didn't, you know, I didn't bring it up.
I mean, I had to bring it up. I didn't have a choice. I mean, not only was the homeowner disrespected, but I feel I was clearly disrespected by him. And so I got to tell you, I'm going to support my motion, fails or not, but you're going to, I guess, set a precedent on what you can do or how you can act at a board. It's going to be not good. So, you want to call the question?
Councilmember Shorter, can you read the question?
Motion is to remove the chair of the comp plan board.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
No.
Vice Mayor, Brad Cruz?
No.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
All right. Unfortunately, I'm done with my comments, so let's get on to the meeting.
Legal comments?
Legal. Go ahead, Keith.
Chair Mayor, the next meeting, the June 8th meeting, is going to be a pretty busy meeting. On June 7th, the town of Davie will be voting on a new five-year public safety agreement with the town of Southwest Ranches, including both police and fire. This is the first time in our town's history that we've actually combined both segments, police and fire, into one omnibus contract. So we no longer have to do what we'd done in the past, which is felt good that we had won one for three years and then kept having to negotiate.
A lot better.
So this enables it to be one contract for a five-year term with five-year renewal after that.
And they're together in sync.
And they're together in sync, the same contract, both together. Davie will review the agreement and hopefully approve it on June 7th. There have been some minor modifications and tweaks along the way. I was summoned over there today for a tweak, but I think we're really good to go. It's a pretty comprehensive agreement. You know, please read it, review it. When it comes to you on June 8th, the entire upper ranks of the fire department and police department from Davie will be here. The city manager will be here, town administrator, excuse me, as long with their mayor, I'm sure will attend as well. And should you approve it, we will be doing a signing, ceremonial signing at that meeting. But they will be here to answer any questions about their service that they provide to the town. Also, on that June 8th meeting, for the residents that want to attend, and it's in the newsletter from this month, is two proposed charter amendments that came up at the, not the last meeting, the meeting before the last meeting, relating to both the sale of public property as well as modification of land use within the town. Both those items will be debated in an ordinance form that will come to you on first reading at that June meeting. So that will also be...
Is that the second or the first?
It's the first meeting in June. I think it's the 8th, right? June 8th. It's the first meeting in June. I want to let the council know and the residents know that we are 60% done with the drafting of a new waste management agreement for the collection of waste. The lowest responsive vendor was Waste Pro, and we are in the middle of drafting a very comprehensive agreement. At last blush, I think we're up to 98 pages on that agreement. And we added a tremendous amount more teeth that the council was asking for.
I was getting to that.
And we've been going back and forth, both internally, and then we're going to go back out to Waste Pro. That should come up, but not the next meeting, but probably the meeting right after that, because we didn't want to lump so many big contracts in one meeting for your review and consideration. I want to thank dearly Leslie Castor and the Castor family for their tremendous service to the town. Many of you may recall Ken Fields was here for a week.
Would have been shorter if I had might say.
And during his tenure here, you know, we had just turned over, we had just, right before he came, actually, taken in Pembroke Pines, who did a wonderful job with our fire department. But I remember even then calling Leslie, and she was on vacation, and I said, Leslie, you know, we're negotiating with Pines' fire contract, but we need you to come back immediately because the volunteers have to be 24 hours a day based, starting tomorrow. Can you do it? And she didn't hesitate to saying, we'll work it out, you know. So she was an incredible asset to the town. Even today, I know I call her on large animal questions consistently, and I know she'll always be there for anything that we need, even though she's retired. So I definitely want to be one to also thank her for her incredible service to the community. Finally, Mayor, and just a personal note, I am going on a cruise this summer, and in case it comes up in the news, I am stopping in Russia. It's not a planned trip, but the cruise ship just happens to be stopping there. So before anyone asks a million questions, I just want to announce it now on the record, so it doesn't come back to bite me later. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right, Administrator, Andy Burns.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're up to bat.
Thank you. Virtually everything I had has been covered. Just one more item I did want to touch on and give you an update, and that is the state budget. Just wanted to let you all know and let the community know what's going on with that. Our lobbyists have been successful this year. We have four projects that are in the budget. They were approved by the legislature about two and a half weeks ago. But that's just one step in a very long dance. There are steps that remain in this dance. As we know from the past, once the legislature approves the budget, it goes forward to the governor, and the governor has 15 days to review it, veto, make changes, approve the budget. What's happening this year is, even though they approved the budget now almost three weeks ago, the Speaker of the House is sitting on the budget. He has not officially sent it to the governor yet. So that meter that the governor has, that starts, that 15 days once he receives it, has not begun. So there's some additional gamesmanship going on in Tallahassee. The budget is set to take effect July 1st. There is some thought that he may hold, that the speaker may hold on to it closer and closer to July 1st to make it more difficult to veto all or part of it. I'm not sure where that's headed at this point, but we'll certainly keep you all posted as things develop in Tallahassee.
Yeah, Andy, two things to add to that, because I didn't know if that was touched at the last meeting when I wasn't here. Definitely want to thank both Representative Stark, Senator Book, for their incredible help to the town.
Evan Stitt.
And Representative Evan Jenny, who has done an incredible job. Thank you, Mayor. I've been speaking to all of them. I also need to thank the Chair of Appropriations, Senator Jack Ladvalla, who was very helpful in pushing this forward. The governor is a very big fan of social media. So I've asked everyone I know, I know we've published it, and it may sound comical, but it's true. You know, if you have Twitter, if you have Facebook, you know, add in the governor's @rickscott, you know, Governor Scott, I think it is, in your Twitter account, in your Facebook account. Let him know, thank you in advance for supporting the Southwest Ranches budget items. Thank you, Andy.
Look it up.
Thank you, Mayor. Keith completed that announcement, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. We're on to the next item. So we're, 13th resolution. Want to read that?
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing a purchase order in the amount of $10,770 to Bennett Fire Products Company Incorporated to purchase five sets of personal protective equipment bunker gear to replace expired or expiring bunker gear, providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Any public comment?
Didn't we already spend $44,000 on this a year ago? Now we're buying more. I think you need to defer this past the 8th, and at least let's see what happens with the Davie contract, because it might be a moot point by then. The idea of buying individual, custom-tailored bunker gear for, most of the time, volunteers who are just out of the training academy gaining experience, why should the town encumber that? We may have a few firefighters here that are long-term, or is, okay, I can go along with that. But when we have turnover, we're refitting every new guy with this bunker gear? Is that how it's going? You know, we're pushing over $50,000 now on raincoats. So when does this end? I mean, what are we getting back for all this investment? A new fire truck that sits in the shop 50% of the time. You were warned not to buy it. You went ahead with it, quarter million dollars down the drain there. And I hope you get rid of it before it runs out of warranty. $30,000 in repair bills. The last year, we had the old truck. You know, this, I wish I could get in each of your minds and see why we're perpetuating this. We have a professional fire department that services our town. We don't need redundancy in this area. What we need is a hardened structure and a building to put them in. That's where the money should be spent. If the volunteers can self-fund, let them have at it. Put them back on their $80,000 a year budget that they had years ago. No one seemed to object to that. But at least Doug spoke up a while back at the $6,000 a copy radio. I don't know where we're at with those, where everyone has to have their own radio as well. So put it in perspective. They're volunteers. They don't really do anything. They're not certified for medical, which is 98% of the calls. So maybe there's some bargaining chip with Davie. Okay, well, let's get the Davie contract behind us and then decide what we're going to do with them. And I see budget cuts. That's what I think we need to do. You know, let them get along with the equipment that they have. And this stuff of bunker gear for each individual person, you have a set of bunker gear with various sizes, hang it up in the closet. When the guy comes in, he knows which ones fit him. He can pull them out for his shift. You know, we run two or three guys on a shift for training. They can use the old stuff. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Anyone else?
Bob Bush. Just like to say that I agree with John, and particularly with the point that we, and it seems like we've dropped relocating where the fire department is out west.
Not dropped.
And I would appreciate some information along that line as to where we're going on that. That's the most important thing we have, that location. It should be in the central area of the out-west area. And I don't think there's a whole lot of disagreement with that. It's a matter of doing it and finding the financing for it. But that's the important thing. The important thing is the limited time you have for EMS to get to somebody if they have a heart attack or they have a stroke. And there really isn't much they can do except get them to the hospital. You've got to go to the hospital in order to correct the situation or solve the problem. And you really have a very limited time of doing it. Transportation is the quick thing, and so... And so, we need a station located in the middle of the area that it covers. So, we have the quickest, get to the person who is suffering, pick them up and get them to the hospital, all in a very short period of time. And according to Doug, we're working on that, and I hope we are. But that's, that's something we need to keep reinforcing. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else? Seen no additional public comment? Public comment is closed. Back to us. And no comments back here? We're good? No comments? Call a question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brad Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate it. You didn't have to stay for the whole thing, but we always enjoy the company. So, and we welcome anyone that ever likes to come. We have two meetings a month, so if you want to come on out, feel free to come out and see us.